This is the City of Wapaka, third Tuesday of the month, city council meeting.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this regular council meeting to order at 6:01 PM. I'm Paul Mayo, I'm council president. I'm pinching for the mayor tonight. The mayor is attending remotely, but felt it more appropriate to have somebody in person run the meeting. Also, for everybody's knowledge, I will be voting on agenda items tonight. We'll start out with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Barb, would you please read the open meeting statement?
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
Thank you, and please take roll.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Colin Dykstra?
Here.
Lori Chestnut?
Here.
Paul Hagan?
Here.
Alan Kealan?
Here.
Scott Porczatsky?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Dimitri Martin?
Here.
Mary Fair?
Here.
Eric Olson?
Here.
Eleven present, we have a quorum.
Okay. I also want to do as we've done in past meetings and as mayor's done in past meetings is have staff introduce themselves, and we'll go clockwise, starting with Barb.
Barb Nowak, deputy clerk.
Aaron Jensen, city administrator.
Sue Abrahamson, interim library director.
Justin Behrens, director of public works.
Andrew Whitman, park and rec director.
Brian Hosele, chief of police.
And we have Josh Werner in the control room, IT director.
And we also, Paul, do have Jared.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Jared. Yeah. You're here. Jared's remote.
Nope, Jared, you're on mute.
Jared, community and economic development director.
Okay.
Virtual.
Very good, thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. This is an agenda of various items that we vote on with one vote. If council or staff have anything that they want removed from the consent agenda and put on the regular agenda, now is the time to specify. Okay, hearing none, I would need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Kealan, second by Chestnut, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries. All right. Next, we have the regular agenda. I don't think we have any additions. Okay, we have no additions, and I would need a motion to approve the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Who moved? Moved by Martin, second by Fair, to approve the regular agenda for tonight. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries. Non-agenda items announcements. We have a proclamation in support of the country and people of Ukraine. I'm not going to read it, but you're just referencing your packets. Do we have to vote on this?
Let's see.
We have it in the past, just so we can place it on file.
Okay, okay, well, just note that it's in your packet in support of the country and people of Ukraine, and we'll place it on file. Next, we have public input. If anybody has any input in the public, or council or staff has any input on non-agenda items, now is your time to speak up and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Ready? Okay, none. Item C is community and department head reports, and we'll start with Michelle Drake from Lucky Tree, who will be speaking for the Wapaka area arts and cultural network. Michelle?
Hi there.
Hi.
My name is Michelle Drake, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Wapaka area arts and culture network. As you may know, the network came about as a result of the city's arts and culture plan. Each month, we have a different group in the network come and share an update with all of you. This month is Wapaka King and In-Between. We are a local group of over eighty shops, restaurants, and salons here in Wapaka. My husband, Tim, and I are business owners downtown, and we're very thankful to be a part of the network, which has provided many opportunities for cooperation within our community. As I was glancing over our minutes from the last couple of years, we've had over fourteen groups who've participated in this network, from the library to Rotary to Winchester Academy to the city of Wapaka. It's been a really great network of people. So far in 2022, the Arts and Culture Network has been working on updating the Arts and Culture Plan. That was initiated in 2018, and the overall goals remain the same, to have the arts as a community resource, to have the arts as a family resource, arts enhancing the quality of life here in Wapaka, and also strengthening our connections within the community. But the plan was due for renewal, so we've been meeting recently, and a lot of the objectives have been met in the last three years, and so we've been looking for ideas in the future. One of those goals was to create this network of groups, to create a calendar where we just had one calendar. We didn't have like four calendars. You're looking at different websites and things. You could just go to one place. So the updated Arts and Culture Plan will be completed soon and presented in full to council really soon. So in order for you or any community members to see what's going on with the groups in the network, you can go to the Wapaka area arts and culture Facebook page, or a lot of the events are on the Wapaka Community Arts Board website. If you go to the Arts Board website, they have a really great newsletter that they've been putting out the last few years, and that gives, they share events and activities that are going on with a lot of different groups, not just with the Arts Board itself. Being a part of Wapaka King and In-Between, we are looking forward to a spring and a summer that looks somewhat normal. Obviously, the last couple of years have been very difficult, and between the pandemic and between having road construction going on, we haven't really had a normal year in quite a while. So we're looking forward to that. With all the improvements downtown and the addition of new businesses, if you've driven down Main Street, you've seen some new ones, so we're really excited for the future of Wapaka. We want to thank the city for its investment in the downtown reconstruction, and the time that it took to look at all the details involved. The city staff were always willing to answer questions and share information during the many months of construction. We also appreciate the downtown investment grant program, which has made new businesses on Main Street and other parts of the city possible. Recently, the Wapaka King and In-Between group has been taking a look at the role that we play in the community. The last five years or so, we've organized and participated in events. You may have seen information about a shop hop that happened recently. We publish a small visitor handout, like a little map, and it has the events and things on the outside and business information on the inside. Coordinated chalk of the town during Arts on the Square, and we work with the network to put on the Yuletide Trail at Christmas time. But we want to take some time to define what Wapaka King and In-Between is all about. We are separate from the chamber, and we incorporate any restaurant, shop, or salon that wants to be a part of it. So this month, we're meeting the business owners of Wapaka King and In-Between, are meeting with the city and the chamber to discuss how all these entities can work together. More specifically, what role each one will take as we promote Wapaka as a destination, share shopping and dining opportunities with visitors, and another aspect to encourage local residents to support local businesses by shopping and dining here in Wapaka. We really appreciate the city and the chamber's willingness to work with us, and especially the time that Andrew Dane has taken to coordinate this discussion. So, not that we haven't been working with them in the past, we have, but we're just wanting to take a look at what role we're going to play, because as business owners, we're super busy, and we don't want to be duplicating things that other groups are doing, and we want to be able to just understand what everybody's role is. So we look forward to sharing with you what we come up with, and we want to thank you for your time tonight. All members of the Wapaka area arts and culture network would like to thank the council for your continued support.
Thanks, Michelle. Any questions for Michelle? Okay. I see Kathy's not here, so Sue Abrahamson, interim library director, you're up.
I feel like Patsy should be sitting right next to me. We've got the ship still afloat, so that's a good thing. I do want to take this opportunity to share some information with you and the public about the library and its services to our community. We are part of a two-county, seventeen library system encompassing Outagame and Wapaka counties, but we are also in a resource-sharing agreement with forty-eight public libraries in northeast Wisconsin. So it goes all the way up to the tip of Door County, Washington Island. Yes, the ferry does take our materials across to the island, all the way up to the border of Upper Michigan, includes all of the Fox Valley, except Calumet and Winnebago counties. So there's quite a few libraries, with the exception of Brown County in northeast Wisconsin, that Wapaka libraries are borrowing with. Before, and during, and since the pandemic, you should know that our library is the second highest circulating library of these forty-nine, second only to Appleton. Now, Appleton Public Library will be closing shortly for a month as it moves to a temporary location so that they can remodel their library. And what this is going to do to our library and our workload remains to be seen, but we're ready for it. And I couldn't be prouder to announce to you that even bigger communities like Akana and Little Shoot and Kimberly and all those Fox Valley libraries, the Wapaka library has a higher circulation. So we're excited. Thanks to lower COVID numbers, our library has moved to a masks optional protocol, and we are respecting the individual's decision about whether or not they should wear a mask, and staff is prepared at all times to have a mask in close proximity to wear if requested by the public. This week, we have resumed in-person library programming, and we have had great success in people welcoming us, welcoming back that program. We will open access to meeting rooms for the public use in mid-April. We are delighted to also report to you today that the library part-time staff has been cross-training in other city departments to fill some temporary staffing needs, and we believe that this cross-training employees helps everyone see the connectivity of our employees and boosts our service to the residents of Wapaka. Last month, the library board approved the waiving of bills older than five years, and this is part of our commitment to access, public access to library resources, and this meant that sixty-seven people have renewed access to the public library, and so we're excited to let them know that, "Come on in, let's start over," right? I welcome any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Sue. Next is Justin Behrens, director of public works.
Thank you, Paul. My report starts on, excuse me, page sixteen onto seventeen. As usual, starting on the wastewater side, our mercury minimization program has seen a lot of success. Casey didn't know we were accepting thermostats, thermometers, compact fluorescent light bulbs, the little twisties, and like the four-foot fluorescent bulbs, they all contain mercury. We're taking those for free, drop off here at City Hall. Other sources of mercury, such as switches or raw mercury, which actually was turned in, should go straight to the PTF. But this program has been going very successful for us, and we do it because, well, the DNR says we have to, but on top of that, we have a mercury variance, so that what we discharge into the river, we are taking steps to get down below the EPA level. So every little bit counts, so please take advantage of this program. We, the crew, Jesse, myself, the rest of the guys, visited Waiooga. They are losing their certified operator at their wastewater treatment plant. We're coming up with an agreement, or we have put in place an agreement, to assist Waiooga, so per their permit, just like ours, you need to have certain certification. With one of their individuals leaving for another position, they lost that, so we are assisting them for a few hours each week to review the plant, review test results, and then submit that on their behalf. The good part is, it's the DNR basin engineer for our plant, it's the same for Waiooga, same for Manawa. We're also currently assisting Mano on a same capacity, but we're making it work. We're able to shift staff around for a few hours without impacting our budget or our performance. Main Street, we had to send in two of the LED lights, so there's two next to the Wapaka pub there that are not there anymore, so you might notice they're not on. We think they're defective, but they're getting tested, and we'll find out soon if they're going to be replaced or not. And once we get those back, we'll be able to set those back on and hopefully get things running the way they should be. It is running much better than it used to. With the technician here, we are able to adjust the colors. They're green right now for St. Patrick's Day. We, the Main Street project was nominated for a design award through WISTOT, that's the local road improvement program. We were nominated. We did not win it, we came in third. However, we're nominated for another one, community development block grant, correct, Aaron?
For the Main Street?
Yeah, Main Street project.
Yeah, that, it was actually in the newsletter, so that is going to be, it's through the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, and that's going to be announced in April.
April twenty-second.
Thank you.
Yes, so we are, we're on three nominees with one award, so we're doing pretty good, we feel. High and Harrison, talking about that later tonight, I did want to mention that our public information meeting is set for March twenty-second. That's next Tuesday. Meeting rooms here in the basement, across the hall, underneath the library. Two meetings, one at noon, one at 5:30. They're going to be the same thing, just me saying the same thing twice. So, open to the public. Letters were sent out to the people who are adjacent to the project, and of course, council members are more than welcome to show up and see what's going on. Water utility PFAS, I've mentioned PFAS a couple times. We are participating with the DNR for a voluntary sampling program. We did this on the wastewater side. Now we're just switching over to the water side. What we found on the wastewater side was very low. DNR had zero concerns with us, and this, well, if you haven't heard what it is, it's the next, you know, chemical that will be really looked at in probably a regulation in the coming future. So, like we usually like to do, try to get ahead of things, see what we have before it becomes a regulation, and this is just the next step. So, the water side, I've received a few comments from people about it, and we haven't started that on the water side, but we will be shortly. Facilities, we're talking about the roof bids tonight. We're working on costing out a new sign at the rec center. As everything with the way economy industry is going, we're not sure how that's going to be costed out right now, but we're working on it. But we're kind of excited at what we see, a brand-new sign out front, message board that would serve basically the entire city, including park and rec and every other department. We're working on our tree order and planting. We're focusing on planting roughly forty trees out in the industrial park area, so along Royalton and Godfrey. That is, well, it's pretty sparse out there, and with the upcoming River North projects, we're hoping we can add a little greenery, a little shade, a little sound barrier, so when development does come, we have some trees that have already started to mature. We're also going to replace a number of trees in the Foxfire area, which was hit pretty hard with the ash, ash trees we had to remove for the ash borer. Finally, our new facility design, we talked about having a presentation, a formal presentation, project review, budget update was possibly going to be this meeting, but we pushed it back to April sixth, so we'll have that meeting, or meeting, excuse me, that presentation at the end of that council meeting with Myron and Barryantos in attendance. That's about it.
Any questions for Justin?
I have just one question. On the meeting for High and Harrison, I've had a couple constituents ask if it's going to be recorded, as they are not able to attend, and it could be on TV.
Yep, so the plan is to record it. The man behind the curtain is not here to comment. I don't know if it'll be live streamed, but it will be recorded for sure.
Yeah, well, they couldn't come during the live stream, so.
Yeah, okay, yeah. We'll have it recorded and available for later view.
Okay, thank you.
Scott?
Justin, when we collaborate with Manawa and Waiooga, do we charge them some types of fees then, or how does that work?
Yes, so the Waiooga, they will reimburse us for our time. The Manawa's a different agreement.
Okay.
They need help. They actually work on Saturdays, their operators do, and we have an operator that lives in Manawa, so he fills that shift for them, so.
So they're paying him directly?
Yes.
Okay.
On that one.
Anything else for Justin? All right, Andrew Whitman, park and rec director.
All right, we'll start with some hiring news. Start with the good hiring news first. We did offer a position, offer the position of senior center supervisor to someone, and they did accept. They'll be starting on April fourth, so they had to take a little bit of time still at their current position. The new hire is Andrea Wanti, who's been in the healthcare field for twenty-three years, and has worked with seniors throughout most of that. So she'll have, bring a ton of experience, great communication with the seniors, and be able to help them with all their needs, and continue to push the senior center forward as we look to do. So, that is the news on the senior center supervisor position. Unfortunately, we'll be doing it again, because Cassandra put in her two-week notice on Monday. She took a job closer to home. She, you know, is very happy here, and we're all sad that she's leaving, but she also has been traveling every day for the last three years, a long distance, which is completely understandable. So she'll be working closer home, which will be better for her home life, and we'll definitely miss her, so we'll be working through that process and having those conversations as we move forward. So, some good, some bad, and we'll just keep pushing through and continue to keep our services where they're at, and we'll just, we'll make it work. We'll get it done. So that's where we're at with that. Continuing to work on the design and engineering for the playground and splash pad, having some meetings with Rattler. You've seen some trees go down, which I've talked about out there. Probably see a bunch of flags out there as they're marking things and doing different things. So when there's some progress there, and we're looking to take that to construction bid, then I'll bring that back up with you guys at that point. Cassandra and I got to spend some time at a state convention a couple weeks ago. They've been canceled the last couple of years due to COVID, so it was nice to see everyone again, and actually went to all the different things on splash pads and playgrounds and inclusiveness, and actually learned quite a bit on that. So it was good to be able to get down there and do some learning for that as well. Registration for our spring and summer programs is now open, so we did, we open everything up on March first. That's the whole spring, all summer, everything that we have in the booklet, which I meant to bring tonight and forgot, so I will put those on your desk for the next meeting. Has everything in there. Lots of the same stuff, but a couple new things as well that are in there, so take a look at that when you get that, and that's about it.
Thanks, Andrew. Any questions for Andrew? Great, Chief Hosele?
Thank you. My report can be found on page twenty-two. We're happy to announce that Paul Shabelski, he has graduated, and he is out of probation now. Our officers are on probation for eighteen months, so a year and a half that we're able to observe their skills and everything that they, everything that they do, and he has successfully completed probation, so he's doing a really great job for us. Captain Helgeson had a week where he had to work with our time system audit, and what our time system audit is, is where we run driver's license checks on individuals or vehicles and everything. There's certain standards that we have to conform to. So John worked with them, and he did an audit of everything that we've had over the last year, and we successfully passed, so we're happy to get done with that. One of the projects that we're working on, and it's something that we've been working on a little bit with Justin, is our current generator that we have during the wintertime, when we had that outage, our generator did not work, and we had problems finding parts because the generator is so old, and it took a really long time for him to get, to get that working again. So we had Borer Electric come and give us a quote for a new generator that we'll probably be looking to add in, in a few years into capital. That way, the entire police department will be able to function. If something goes down, we won't lose any power. We'll just be able to continue to operate the way we normally would. Our next meeting, Commissioner Schultz is going to present our annual report, so he is sifting through that right now. That was given to the commission members last week at our commission meeting. Also, one of the things that we're trying to be proactive is, is obviously with the rising fuel prices, we use quite a bit of fuel with the squad cars. So, a few weeks ago, we initiated to try to conserve as much fuel as we can. The sergeants have started riding with the officers at nighttime, periodically throughout the shifts. With the weather being warmer and not being below zero, the officers are able to, they bring their cars back, and they turn them off, so we have less idling hours. And then one of the things that we talked about is getting our bike patrol back. We should be back to full staff this summer, and we have some officers that have volunteered to go back out on the bike patrol and to do that. And if we have any nights where we call a load-up night, where nobody's on vacation, and we got the PSL workers working with the night shift, we're looking at maybe doubling up in some of the squads to, just to try to reduce the fuel consumption. We're trying to not go over budget with that, so that's one of the things that we've talked about with the officers, and they're on board with trying to do everything they can to assist us. We also had, between January and February, we had some positive performance reports for the officers. There's not a lot of times where people seek out and tell us all the good things that we've done, but Ryan McCuskey, our PSLO, had been working with a call with aging and disability, and they were very pleased with how he worked with the person, with the individual that they had, how professionally he was, the different things that went out of his way to do, and they haven't seen that all the times when they've worked with, with different people, and they were just really happy to see the time that he took. Officer Han, who takes care of our evidence room, she found a mistake that was made in the court system. There was an order that was given to give a gun back to an individual. There was a mistake that was made on a court case number, and she caught that, so she was able to stop a person from getting a gun back that shouldn't have gotten, that shouldn't have gotten a gun. And then also, Officer Van Denter and Whitman, there was an individual back in, I believe it was January, in the library here, where the ambulance had arrived, and the officers jumped right in, and the ambulance wasn't able, they were able to do everything they had. The officers were able to get everything out of the ambulance. They're also, they assisted them with CPR and also the defibrillators, and they were really happy to see that the, they were easily to be able to work with the officers. And then unfortunately, we're kind of like the park department, we had a resignation. Our administrative assistant, Tiffany Stotzheim, who has been with us, is, she is moving. She's doing a career change, and she is going to be resigning from doing a career change, and she is going to be resigning from our department effective April 29th. So we have posted internally to see if there's anybody interested with that, and hopefully we can get that hired as soon as possible, and we'll go from there. That's all I have unless anybody has any questions.
All right, thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
Josh Werner, IT Director.
To answer the question about the High and Harrison meeting, we're taping the one at noon, and we'll stream it live on Facebook, and then people can go to the website or Facebook or TV station and get it after the fax. We'll make sure that gets out there. We'll pack online side of things. We've been struggling to attract staff. We finally had one of those people come out of the woodwork with one of our Facebook ads. We met with an individual. If our initial, if first impressions and instinct are right, I think we've made an offer that's been accepted to someone who's going to be very excellent for us. Her name's Caitlin Kriesel, and she starts with us next Monday, and we're still looking for at least one more person. And thanks to Sue and Patsy, we've got a lead on an individual that works at the library that potentially could be interested, we're meeting with next week, and if that works out ideally, we might be good to go, and if not, we'll keep looking, but it's, with the staffing market, it's starting to move positive for us. The 11 Tower County Project, next week, Monday and Saturday, as long as the forecast stays accurate, we're going to be equipping two of the towers. Been spending a lot of time working on two Public Service Commission broadband grant applications that are going to be on the agenda tonight. IT side of things, we continue work on our licensing and permitting software implementation. Looking at a early August for the start of that. The server I ordered a month and a half ago has finally shipped, if that tells you anything about the supply chain, so we've got two main servers, one for general government, one for police, and this year, the police one's getting replaced. So once that's here, there's a lot of other steps that go into getting everything migrated over and updated, and then electronics recycling, we've got that scheduled, that's going to be Friday, April 22nd, 10:30 till 1 at Swan Park, and that's all I have.
Any questions for Josh? All right, thanks, Josh. Barb, have anything? Deputy Clerk Barb Nowack.
Just what's in the packet, what Sandy had.
Okay, thanks, Barb. City Administrator Erin Jensen.
Thank you, Paul. So my monthly report, I'll touch on Finance Director position right away. That actually closed yesterday. We do have candidates, so going through some phone interviews right now. Again, we're working with IPR, Integrated Public Resources, so those phone interviews are taking place in the next couple of days. We expect to have some interviews in person scheduled next week, so we hope that that results in a Finance Director. Airport Manager Proposals came in Friday, was the due date at 4 o'clock. We did receive four proposals. Three of those proposals were in the private contract structure, and one of them was in the employee, city employee structure. Was able to review those, got done with those yesterday, and we have a good variety of different types of proposals, so I really look forward to sitting down with Airport Board and going through those interviews, which right now looks like we're going to have interviews scheduled for next Tuesday afternoon. We'll work through those. I would anticipate going through two different sets of interviews for the Airport Manager as well. Auditors are in this week. I know that would have been Kathy's report. She's been working with them as well as Jerry and other department heads and staff, I know utility staff as well, so they've been answering their questions. Evaluations and goal setting, just last meeting, if you remember, we had the presentation and City Council adopted the Employee Rewards Program. We've started that in process. I have all of my meetings with department heads the last week in March, if I haven't had them already, and then, so we'll go through that process first, and then department heads with their supervisors second, and then supervisors with their staff after that. So we look forward to kicking that off. Our rating, I wanted to talk a little bit about that, got our preliminary or final rating for credit and bond ratings. That was an A-plus rating, which is unchanged from a year ago, which was expected and positive news. It allowed us to borrow at a rate that was better than it was presented at the council meeting by Justin Fisher and Baird. We were projecting a 3.3% interest rate for the term of our bonds, and we actually got it at about 2.8. Little bit of news that Kathy and I both got this afternoon, City Council's support in allowing staff and Mayor Smith to work with Baird to be flexible and initiate the, get into the market at the right time. Just a little comparison, so City of Whitewater did a different process. We have the exact same credit rating, and their rate was 3.5% through their process when we were able to obtain that 2.8. So that amounts to about $150,000 of difference of savings. So credit to Council for their support and that flexibility, and just gives you an idea for what that turns into. Other than that, really just a TID project plan. Been working on that, as you guys have probably seen in the newsletter and reports, we'll be going through a series of meetings starting in April with Joint Review Board, Plan Commission, City Council, and then back to Joint Review Board. So we, we have been working with RW Baird on that, and staff has been doing an excellent job. Rhonda Rollins has been assisting a ton with mapping, give her a ton of credit, and also the, working with the assessors on property values and such. Finally, want to just give a little bit of an update on a grant that we received, the CDBGCV Grant, which was for housing assistance, if that's enough letters for you. It was for utility assistance, housing assistance as it related to COVID. If you remember, CAP Services helped us, and we partnered with them to administer this, but what we're realizing is that we're not going to, we got 1.1 million and change, and that was to serve the five county region that CAP Services serves. We're not going to be able to go through all of that. We'll have a considerable amount left, maybe 850,000, $900,000. So what we're doing right now, Greg, myself, and Justin met yesterday to talk about what are the opportunities to submit an amendment request to the Department of Administration that would allow us to keep that money in the City of Opaqua. We looked at our capital project list, and we did submit an amendment, I think today or yesterday. Greg got it over to the DOA to see if they would consider assisting with the city portion of the splash pad project, which would be a big help for our capital plans. So we'll see what happens. We have yet to see if they'll consider that, but we'll keep you updated. Other than that, I think department heads have covered everything, so thank you.
Thanks. Any questions for Erin?
Oh.
We, we forgot Jared.
Oh, yeah, sorry. It's easy to, not easy to forget, just because you're on screen.
Jared, you're up.
Thank you for not forgetting me. So.
Oh, my God.
Previously mentioned, and I'll just touch on again, so a downtown SWOT analysis as part of our Connect Communities status is kind of required, so we are putting together a SWOT analysis for the downtown. Previously, it was just going to be a single meeting. After staff discussed further, we are going to restructure it a bit. We're going to have an initial meeting with just some primary stakeholders, maybe one individual, you know, from a retail business, from a food or retail-related business, you know, just select stakeholders to try to narrow in our focus. You know, if we have too many focuses and too many people, the, the meeting is not going to be productive. So this first meeting is really just to try to prioritize what we should be discussing, and then we're going to hold a second meeting later in the year with more individuals with more of a narrow focus that we can, again, still be productive with. So that initial meeting is going to take place on March 21st. Our Economic Development Specialist, Andrew Dane, has sent out invites to select individuals requesting their attendance. I'm not sure we have had any RSVPs back yet, but we're hopeful for 10 to 15 individuals. Again, just kind of this priority, just, you know, priority-setting discussion meeting. So further updates will come after March 21st. Development updates, Fairmont Development still occurring in the city. We are still very active on that front. I won't go over all of those. Again, still working on code revisions, just trying to clean things up, areas where there's, where we found issues, or maybe just ways we can better adapt the zoning code to our community we are trying to accommodate. River North subdivision, not much on that, I guess, still kind of staying stagnant. As Erin mentioned, we're going through the creation of the TIF. Those are kind of really the priorities at the moment. River North zoning, this is a, an update or a new one, so Erin and I have been going out to the different businesses surrounding our River North residential area, so still in the River North area, but all of those existing businesses such as Sunny Day, Carousel Gymnastics, Spine &amp; Sport, Paws &amp; Claws, and the others. So looking at the zoning map, they were zoned I-2 heavy industrial, looking to change their zoning to better accommodate them. So like the Sunny Day daycare does belong more of a commercial district rather than a heavy industrial. So just going through, trying to change those, so a large influx of zoning change application requests will be coming in just to try to get them into compliance where they need to be. Signage discussion, so we are continuing through the signage discussion and Plan Commission. We held our first one and continue to, or hope to continue to bring forward discussions on signage consistently to try to get it wrapped up. And then the Housing Repair Grant Program, so a little bit of a change in this. I know staff previously mentioned that it was going to be rolled out today, March 15th, after we were reviewing some administrative, just items that we needed to make sure we have correct, and we weren't, you know, weren't asking for the right information on the applications, et cetera. We were going to push that, or we are going to push that back to April 4th, just to allow enough, our staff enough time to complete the application forms and materials, you know, get them where they need to be so we can roll it out properly with no issues or hiccups, hopefully. So the new date is April 4th, and we should have everything ready to go by then. I'll take any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Jared? Okay. Scott, did you have a question for Erin?
Yeah, I did. Erin, can you elaborate what IPR has done and will be doing for this Finance Director search, if you would?
Yeah, so IPR has comprised of a lot of ex-administrators or finance directors. One that you guys know is Russ Von Gumpel, who was the interim administrator here. They have reached out to their networks, so to speak, to kind of make that the position known. At this time, they are the ones that are performing those phone interviews, and they'll be scoring the candidates through those phone interviews, giving us their feedback on who they think, where those candidates stand after that, and then we will be engaging with them in the in-person interviews. So that's an overview of, of their involvement.
Thanks.
Yeah.
All right, thanks, Erin. We'll move on to unfinished business. First item, the only item actually, is Ordinance Number 04-2022, an Ordinance Amending Chapter 17, City of Opaqua Zoning Ordinance. This is a second reading, and Jared Requ, would you remind us of what this is?
Of course, thank you. So this starts on page, the red line starts on page 118 of your ordinance, otherwise the actual ordinance starts on page 108. The red line on page 118 may be easier to see, the changes. So essentially, primary goal of this is to reduce some of the conditional use permit requirements on these. So a lot, for a lot of them, the conditional use permit is just an extra step, it's an extra review. You know, with, with state statutes being what they are, there really is no opportunity to deny a conditional use unless you have a very, very, very good reason. So just trying to cut down the, the conditional use requirements, a lot of extra steps for applicants, it just, it really puts up a barrier to the potential of these ever occurring, you know, along with the barriers that are already up for them. So just looking to change the, a lot of the conditional uses to permitted, as can be seen on page 118 of the red, on the red line in the packet. A lot of the other items being changed are just kind of trying to clear things up, reduce some, some administrative excess that really isn't needed with some waivers that, you know, just have to be kept and maintained and updated quite frequently. And then just, again, some changes for clarity to try to better suit it to our community. So happy to take any questions. This is the second reading.
Anything for Jared? Okay, this is the second reading, and we'll be voting on this tonight, and I need a motion in this.
I will move to approve.
Second.
Okay, moved by Keeland, second by Chestnut, to approve Ordinance Number 04-2022, an Ordinance Amending Chapter 17, City of Opaqua Zoning Code. Any other discussion? This is a roll call vote. Barb will take the roll.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dmitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
Thanks, Barb. Move on to new business. First item, item is Ruby's Pantry passed approved conditional use permit. Jared, you're up again, please.
Thank you very much. So there's not an item in here in your packet, it's more of just a verification for staff's purpose. So recently, another business has approached Ruby's Pantry, which is on Fulton Street, and wanted to possibly go into their building as a secondary tenant. So with that, Ruby's Pantry approached the city, had asked city staff what would need to be done for this. City staff looked back on Ruby's Pantry's CUP that they had put through the conditional use permit, and one of the conditions on there stated that after, or after they gain occupancy and begin operations, that Ruby's Pantry was, Ruby's Pantry would be under a six-month review period, in which staff would review the, the operations, ensure there's no negative impacts, and then after that six months has elapsed, then city would re-bring, or the city would re-bring back the conditional use permit for an official final approval of it. And then with that, if additional conditions needed to be imposed, et cetera, for this use to be there, at that point, they could. So staff felt that as they're in this probationary period, they could not come forward with any changes with the conditional use permit. So staff felt as though it would be, I felt as though it would be proper to come back to the Plan Commission and Council, who both recommended and approved the, quote-unquote, approved the preliminary conditional use permit to verify that no changes should be being made in this first six months while they're under review, since the, again, quote-unquote, approved conditional use permit was not actually approved yet. Speaking with Plan Commission, it was reiterated, same, same as staff had felt that they would need to wait for the six months to pass before they could bring forward any potential amendments to it. So I just wanted to see if there was any opposition with the Council that they felt that condition should be viewed differently, since they were the ones that approved it, or if that is in line with what was being thought when it was approved.
So Jared, you're saying that you want a Council to affirm the original CUP, that no changes in the first six months?
Yeah, so, so affirm that there should not be any changes within the first six months. That's what that, affirm that that is what that condition meant.
Okay. All right. And any questions? Paul?
When does the six months expire, and are you able to let us know or know what additional business might be coming in there?
additional business might be coming in there?
So I guess I'll be quite honest, the additional business, after I said I would have to get approval and this, you know, if, if staff's assumptions were correct, it could be six months before they even get the opportunity to go in. And they did seek elsewhere in the city, and I believe they are entering into a contract with somebody else, a different building. That does not need to wait for this process. So I guess I don't want to, want to disclose what, who came forward, as I don't know that they would want that, since they're not going in there. Now, to answer your first question, the six months, so they began operations, and I would have to check with our commercial building inspector, but I believe they began operations at some point in February. So that date in February, six months from February, would be the approximate time it would come back forward.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, if this is the way council feels, I would need a motion in a second to affirm.
Second.
Moved by Chestnut, second by Peterson, that council approves of Ruby's Pantry past approved conditional use permit as presented. Any further discussion? It's another roll call vote.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Kealan?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dmitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thanks, Barb. Next up is the first reading of ordinance number 08-2022, an ordinance amending Chapter 7, Wapaka City Traffic Code as it pertains to the operation and parking of motor vehicles in public parking lots. Justin?
Thank you, Paul. This is on 128 of the packet. Basically, this is just cleaning up our parking lots. We've had some changes. There is a couple, I guess, errors or emissions found in the existing code that we're trying to clean up. This was brought to my attention by Clerk Stibbs, and what, what caught her attention near the bottom is the, the pay structure. If you pay for the whole year, it's $120. That's, that was first implemented a number of years ago, and then they adjusted that to be prorated after a number of comments from the public. That was never codified, but City Hall has just been operating underneath that administrative decision. It was brought to council a number of years ago, but like I said, was never officially put within the actual ordinance. So that's Section 7.123D, that's a whole brand-new section basically outlining how we administer these parking permits, and that's for overnight in the several parking lots that we allow. So with that, we also found one error. Lot, there was a lot in our old ordinance that calls out 209 West Fulton Street. There's no such thing as 209, we assume that meant 219, which is the old QuickTrip building. So we cleaned that up, and we just changed the descriptions to be more similar with each other. So Lot 1, southwest corner of South Washington and Union, the big parking lot across from PD Fire Department, that's now Lot 1. Lot 2, northwest corner, or excuse me, southeast corner of North Washington and Granite Street, the Granite Street parking lot kitty corner to Dane's Home, that allows overnight parking. Lot 3, which is Cooper Street typically known as, that's also overnight. Southwest corner of North Washington and West Fulton, that's a new lot, which we just striped last year, so we're adding that one into this whole spiel. Lot 5 is southeast corner of Franklin and Fulton Street, an existing lot, and then, of course, City Hall Lot. So with the shuffling and the changing, within that first section of 3A, we had to amend the next two sections where we call out lots 1, 2, and 3 are overnight with a permit, and then 4, 5, and 6, which one of those lots being new, you can park there within the standard hours, but no, not overnight. So little cleanup for an existing ordinance.
Okay. Any questions for Justin? Okay, this is the first reading, this will come back next meeting for a vote. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Who are getting these permits, and who are we targeting to park there? Who, who do we want to park there?
Well, anyone can park there. You mean overnight during the day, like?
Yeah, overnight, that's what, that's what we're talking about, it's overnight permits, right?
Yes.
Like, is this first for downtown residents? Is that what we're going?
That's, most of the people that utilize it live downtown, second floor, Main Street, or one of the apartment units in the area, and there's very limited parking, so that's what those ones, our parking lots, provide.
Uh-huh.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Dmitri?
Why is it, why would 4, 5, and 6 be excluded from being able to park overnight?
Let's see. Southeast corner of Franklin and Fulton Street and City Hall. Well, traditionally, we haven't allowed people to park there. Lot 4, we have, is right next to Police Department. We haven't, we don't want people parking overnight there. It's not conducive to PD with their, what they need to do with, with the buildings that are there. City Hall, we've never allowed overnight parking, that was just so we had more circulation in the downtown area for City Hall users and for the library, library users, patrons. Southeast corner of Franklin and West Fulton Street, southeast corner of Franklin and Fulton Street. Oh, yeah, yeah, thanks. Thanks.
That's a very true.
Same thing, there's, rural insurance is, operates out of there, so we don't want cars in front of there all the time, I guess, getting in the way of, of that business operation there. Thank you. Yep. Well, and I guess to further on that, the capacity with our overnight, we're not full, so we have no need to really expand that at this point, so.
All right. Thanks, Justin. First reading. Justin's up again with the City Hall and Police Department roof projects.
Keep going, starting on page 130 is my memo. We're looking at a couple different projects to replace some roofs here. This building, City Hall Library, basically what we have up on this roof is two different systems, the flat roof, which was replaced in 2020. At that time, the pitched section, which is shingles, we thought could go a few more years, and here we are now, I guess, looking to replace that because we feel that it's, reached its full life. Police Department building, there's several different roof sections up there. This is the section that's over top of the squad area, so when the building was last renovated in 96, that's when that roof was, or the major renovation, 96, that's when that was put on. The other flat area above, like the turrets, that's not included. Thanks for scrolling down, Aaron, that's, highlights the areas where we're looking, that's City Hall. The next one is PD, so the section further to the west on the, the corner of Union and Washington. So we put together a bid, or excuse me, a budget for both of these projects, $75,000 for City Hall, $20,000 for the Police Department with the City Hall roof. We asked for an alternative to look into a metal standing seam roof. Unfortunately, all those bids came in high, so we threw those out. We're asking to replace the shingles, we have the skylights that are there, we separated that out as a, as a separate cost, I guess, from the bid, because some roofers don't like working with windows, especially ones that are nearly horizontal, it can be a little tricky. But as we look through the bids, CNC Service came in the low for both projects in, on the shingle part, and the skylights were, were low by a local rougher, Scheneka Roofing, and we asked him if he would cooperate with this other company, and he declined, he just thought that, he was hoping to get the metal part of it, that didn't work out. So we add those up, we have CNC as the low for City Hall, we're within budget and under by roughly $9,000. The PD came in over budget by just roughly about $5,000, again, to CNC. The difference there, though, if we combine the two, I guess, borrow projects, we are with it, we're under budget for those two, if you combine them, it's coming out of the same capital borrow, general borrow here, so what we're looking to do is to hire CNC for both projects for the amounts shown, and I think I need two different actions for it, that's why I wrote it out, at two different, two different ways.
Okay. I, I don't see that.
On page 130, requested action, awarding, let's see here, the bid to CNC for the City Hall, and then the low of that awarding to CNC for the Police Department roof.
So two, two separate vote, two separate votes?
I, yes.
Okay, do that. Any questions for Justin? All right. We'll take the City Hall roof project first, if somebody would like to make a motion in a second.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Dmitri, and second by Fair?
Chestnut. Chestnut. Lori.
Oh, Lori, okay, sorry, Lori. To approve the awarding of the bid to CNC Services Incorporated of Schofield, Wisconsin, for an amount not to exceed $64,075 to replace City Hall shingle roof and skylights. Any further discussion? So a roll call vote, please, Barb.
All right. Eric Olson?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Dmitri Martin?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Alan Kealan?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thanks, Barb. And next, we have, we need a motion to approve the award to CNC for the Police Department project.
I'll move that.
Second. Moved by Kealan, second by Olson, to award, award the bid from, to CNC Services Incorporated of Schofield, Wisconsin, for an amount not to exceed $25,500 to place the Police Department roof. Any further discussion? Another roll call vote, please, Barb.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Kealan?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dmitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thanks, thanks, Barb. Next, we have the High Street and Harrison Street Construction Project Contract Award. Justin?
Yes, thanks. Starting on 141, with supporting documents after that, this is a, our major roadway project this year, so High Street from roughly Highland Drive up to Fulton Street, and then Harrison Street from Fulton Street to Granite Street. So High Street is basically the more complex piece, we're replacing basically everything in that stretch, widening the narrow windy section near Highland Drive, and I mean, everything as far as water sewer, storm sewer, curb and gutter, brand-new pavement sidewalk. Harrison Street is a little scaled back, we're replacing the water laterals there, and then just doing a mill and pave, and then spot replacement for sidewalk and curb and gutter. Also within, I guess, the project of, as a whole, is the waterline extension for the Baptist Church over at the school property. That has been funded, I guess, through the Baptist Church underneath that agreement we have in place. We put those all into one bid. The more you can give a contractor at one time, the more efficient you should get on your pricing, so a foot of water main, you know, is more competitive when you can provide 3,000 feet versus just 1,000. So that is all in this one bid, bid set. So we designed the project, we put it out for bid, and we, we received eight bids, which is a phenomenal amount. The ranges of what was received was fairly tight. I gave a, a basic breakdown on the memo, and then following that is the, the actual bid, which is very detailed, small numbering, and won't go into that unless requested. But you can see, it stacks up very well to what we have set up. So the street items within budget, the sewer items within budget, the water items were slightly above budget. However, our utilities will have, or will be borrowing on a two-year note, so that basically will be, what we cover on this year will just have less to do for projects the following year. The church water items, you can see on there as well, roughly $233,000, for a total project of almost 1.3 million. Typically, on these projects, I ask for contingencies with inflation and our budgets being stressed, you know, I'm not, I can't do that anymore. Typically, what we've done, though, with that is, when we see air, locations or spots, we can make improvements, like going down a side road an extra 20 feet, because we're there, that's what we usually use that contingency for, and a lot of times for the unknown you're digging through and you find a giant rock that shouldn't be there. But, so I'm still asking for what is, what we, what we budgeted for. So with this request, I should have noted, of the eight low was David Tenner Corporation out of Green Bay. We have worked with them before, they've done the lead service line replacements on Granite Street and Lake Street, and that is, will also be a component of this project. So they were the low of eight bid, and we've had a good working relationship with them in the past. Now, the funding of it, so I'm still looking for the funding as bulleted or noted on the memo on page 2, from the general obligation bonds of $685,000, from the water revenue bonds of $300,000, from the sewer revenue bonds of $190,000, and then the Baptist Church will be covered underneath our memorandum of understanding with them. And obviously, we will always look to find ways to be efficient with, with our work, and whenever we can hold back in fine savings, we will. So if we don't need it, we won't use it, but just looking for that authorization, because sometimes things come up during construction, so. I'll open it up to any questions, and the action I'm looking for is on the page.
Colin, just clarify the numbers. On the first page, I see a total of 1.267 million. Just below there, it says it's 1.394 on the second page. So I want to make sure we got the right number.
So the, the number below adds in the contingencies.
When I look at the top number, you have 1.1, and then the 260-some for the church, that doesn't add up to 1.2, so I guess I'm confused all the numbers.
Well, unless I made a math error, which I can double-check here.
He's right. Because it was not.
You are correct there, Colin. Hmm, so, yes, that is, um, hold on a second.
You had mentioned something of a cost savings, is that, was there two separate bids for, you know, including the church, or two separate line items? I, I don't know, maybe that was.
No, no, it, that is, that's a math error, I'm not sure how that came to be. So what I am looking for is that budget number on the right, the subtotal, which is which is 1,160,000 plus the church, which is 233,942, which should equal 1,393,492.
Justin, can you repeat the church water item one more time? Thank you. 233,492, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then?
Okay.
Total is, can you repeat the total one more time?
Okay, any more questions for Justin? Okay, I would need a motion in a second.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Hagan, second by Fair, that council approves entering into a contract with David Tenner Corporation of Green Bay for the High and Harrison Streets Construction Project in an amount not to exceed 1,393,492. The breakdown of which, Justin, detailed a few minutes ago. Any more discussion? Dimitri.
So where does the contingency come in then? Wouldn't that be 15% then on top of the 1.3 mil?
No, I'm not, I'm not asking for that 15% because that would put us over budget. I don't want to do that. Basically, the, the contingency is the difference between the 1.3, I erased the number, I don't have anymore, but the 1.3 million and then that we just talked about, minus the 1.2 million that is shown on, actually take that back. At the bottom of the bid tab, that's where I'll go, on page 147, which is still 1,1267,000. It's, it's that difference is all we're looking for, for a contingency.
So about 125,000.
Yep.
Dave.
Why are we including, or maybe because we are going to pay, why are we including the 233,000 if the church is going to pay that?
Because you have to authorize the contract to David Tenner and traditionally we have always assigned a dollar amount to it that they could not exceed. And then the, the wrinkle on top of that, the, the four bullet points, each one of those should not exceed as well.
Our share then is really 1,160,000, 1,160,000.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Split up between the general obligation, the sewer and water.
Anybody else? Dimitri.
So on page 145, the letter from Strand Associates talks about the low bid being the miscalculated amount. Are they aware that the math is wrong? I mean, what was the actual bid then? You see what I'm saying in their letter? They talk about the low bid of 1,267,490. Well, that's the amount that, that was misadded above.
No, so the low bid, that was the low bids. The bid tab that's shown on 146 and 147, those were the actual numbers received with the totals at the bottom. So that David Tenner Corporation is on the far left as they are the low on the bottom of that page. And that is 1,267,490.48. That is what Strand lists on their letter as the apparent low bidder. So what I am looking for is using our budgeted funds, not the actual bids, for awards so we have a slight cushion for contingency.
I get it.
I, I have the math error on my memo. If that's, that's tripping people up, that's where the math error is, is on my memo. The bids, the actual received bids below it are correct.
So the actual bid was 1,267,490?
Yes.
Okay, there's no, we're on the same page with the contractor?
Yes, that's, that's the bid. Those bid prices per, per item are locked in or will be locked in once we get through this.
Okay, and then plus the contingency equals a 1,393,492?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody straight on that?
No.
Why not?
So then the error is basically in one or more of these bid items listed on page 141? Not the, you're saying the total isn't incorrect? It's, the error is in the actual sub-amounts. The individual bids are incorrect, is that right? Because if the total is correct and those don't add up to the total, then the things that we're adding together must not be right.
Use your microphone, please.
I said, so if the total is correct and the things that are being added up don't actually come up to that correct total, then the things that are being added up are incorrect. Right? I just want to make sure that we're clear on this so that when it's time for the church water, the church to pay for their portion, they know exactly what it is and we know what we're approving.
What did the motion say for the total number?
1393492.
So if you go to Justin's memo on page 141, simply a matter of, I can't even. On the budget on the right side, we budgeted 1,160. If you add the 233 that the church is paying, that comes out to 1,393,492.
Right. Justin, which, which one of the items, street item, sewer item, water item, needs to change to make the total come out correctly, you know? Or does it matter?
I, sorry, I'm unmuted here, but it doesn't matter, does it? Because he's using the budgeted numbers of 1,160,000 plus the city, or the church share, which comes up to the 139, yeah, the 139 number. So, I mean, and that's the number that you guys are voting on. So the bid numbers are not the numbers that he's using. It's the budget numbers that he's using.
Right.
It's not that easy to be an accountant, is it, Justin?
No, I should have sought your opinion before I came forward with this.
So, yeah, so the mayor is right on that. So we're using the, the budget numbers for an award plus the exact number for the church line to come up with 1,393,492.
So we're authorizing you then to spend up to that budgeted amount plus that 233, but you're not, you're not going to pay the contractor that because your bids were less. You're going to actually pay them based on their bid and you're not going to.
It depends on how, it depends on, on the work.
Unless there's overages.
Yeah, or underages, then that's even a word, then we pay for less.
Well, there's 124,000 contingency in here too, Dimitri. Okay, and that 1393 number. All right. We already have a motion in a second. If there's no more questions, Barb will take the roll call vote.
Dimitri Martin.
I want to approve it, but I'm going to abstain just because I don't really fully understand it, to be honest.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
David Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Parchatsky.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
9 ayes, motion carried.
Great. Okay, where are we? Item E, High Street and Harrison Street Lead Service Line Replacement Construction Project Contract Award.
Can I, can I do a math check quick?
Sure.
No, I'm just kidding. So the same, along the same project, High and Harrison Street, we have, we're replacing roughly 40 laterals along the way. This is an area where our lead is there. So in our city, we have lead goosenecks, which I've described before as basically a two to three foot piece of lead that connects to a water main or to the lateral. And that's it. Usually downstream of that is copper or a gavel and ice metal. However, those are defined by the DNR and EPA as a lead service line. We seek the funding that's available out there and recently was notified that we would be awarded what, what we requested, which was 280,000. So this takes care of the service lines that are on the private property. So we replace on the public side, within the public right of way, under the water utility. The private side gets covered underneath this DNR slash EPA grant fund. So that's from the shut off up to the meter. So we, so we basically packaged these two different projects together, put it out to bid. And on this one, we received three bids. And again, a bid tab is attached, it's a lot less complicated on this one. Once again, David Tenner was the low. I mean, that's exciting to see because now we have one contractor out there doing two different projects. It should be much easier to coordinate and to complete. So it, it meets, it meets all the requirements. We're securing that funding from the DNR. And with this one, I am looking at just awarding this one to David Tenner Corporation for that bid amount, that 273,391 and 50 cents as listed on their bid. We will get the 280 full amount from the DNR. That will cover any overages or if we have like a leak at a different place in town, it gives us the capacity to do a couple more wherever they may pop up. So I'm looking for, for another approval for David Tenner for this specific project. And I will note that next month, I'm not sure if it's going to be the next meeting or the following meeting, I have to bring forward a resolution and also a financial assistance agreement from the DNR. They're preparing these templates for us and it's basically the agreement of awards. So getting the 280,000 from the DNR for, to pay for the removal of the lead. So how it works is we front the cash, we ask for reimbursement, they provide the reimbursement. We've done it on Main Street, Granite Street and Lake Street. And we plan on doing it again here on High and Harrison Street. So I'll open that up to questions and action as listed on my memo.
Move to approve. Any discussion or questions for Jared?
Justin.
Or Justin, I'm sorry.
Jared's going to be strutting around tomorrow.
Okay, sorry, sorry, Justin.
It's okay.
Okay, we have a motion by Dimitri Martin, second by Paul Hagan, to approve and the awarding of a contract with David Tenner Corporation of Green Bay, Wisconsin, for a High and Harrison Street Lead Service Line Replacement in an amount not to exceed 273,391.50 with funds from the Wisconsin DNR Lead Service Line Fund. They figure this out to right to the penny? Yes. Any further discussion? Barb will take a roll call vote, please.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Parchatsky.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
Thanks Barb. Item F is an easement agreement with Wopaka School District. Justin, you're a busy guy.
One more time, yeah, I think. So page one, or sheet 152 in the packet is the memo on this one, followed by an agreement with the school district and then also an exhibit, which you may want to focus on because it'll make it a lot easier. You might be thinking we've already gone through this already. We secured an agreement with the Baptist Church, which is just south of, of that map there, indicating or detailing that they would pay for us or pay for the extension of a water line, basically from the school property down to them. So that was that agreement. We had that, but got, once we got that in place, then we started designing and we started looking for easements for these water lines on school property and we could not find any. And basically what we found out is we have water lines on school property, which the utility operators feel those are public. Looking at how they're laid out, they appear to be school property because there are shut offs at the property line. So there was a missing link here where we're, we're trying to clean up this area a little bit in our record. So it's always been perceived that they're, they're public lines, they're looping, they service more than one building, typically that's public. We have no easements, we should, so we're setting up this agreement. So we will get those easements. In doing so, we have to access school property and then also in exchange, we're going to be making a connection of this new water line on school property, digging through their grass field and then again, securing an easement for that. So it's basically an agreement that, just kind of trying to clean up the area where they will provide us permission to, to access their land, make this new connection and then in return, we get easements for these water lines, which we will then maintain like we always have. Once, once we get official easements formalized and recorded within the county clerk's office, this exhibit will be updated to basically provide the legals and be more specific than what this is. Also, kind of muddering the waters is a sewer line that's cutting right through the middle of it. Again, we feel that's our, our municipal, our main there on school property. And again, we're just trying to clean up this agreement with the school and work together on this.
Okay. Question for Justin. Motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Chestnut, second by Parchatsky, that the city entered into an agreement, easement agreement with the school district of Wopaka as presented. Any more discussion? Barbara, call a roll.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Parchatsky.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
I voted once.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item G. Here's Josh. Poof. Wapaka Online PC, PSC Broadband Expansion Grant.
All right, thanks. I'm with as with past practice, I'm bringing forward permission to apply for two Public Service Commission Broadband Expansion Grants. And that's because there would be a financial commitment if awarded one or both of them. The first one is probably a project I've talked about before. It's in the capital plan for multi multiple purposes. We've applied before with a bigger project and we're just narrowing down to just this one item. And one of those is to get a taller tower here at City Hall. We've got a 50 foot tower that's not serving our needs anymore, both for Wapaka Online and City IT side of things. If you look at the roof, that's going to get redone. We've got a couple of tripods up there, equipment up there. And that's both because of weight concerns and line of sight limitations that are taking place between that tower and the Shambal Water Tower. You go over 20 feet that way and it's a little bit better when we look. So with Wapaka Online, when you look down the road, we're going to need some bigger equipment to push more bandwidth to our key locations with the network originating here. And this tower won't support that with the future Public Works Building coming in a few years. We need to get them connected back to City Hall. So it just ties into a lot of future things, gets things off the roof and back into one place. So total estimate cost of this project is well over 71,000. We're asking for the Public Service Commission to cover 49% of that. They like a 50 50 match. I try to structure it where they're doing 49, just to make us a hair more competitive. Wapaka Online would cover a little over 19,000 and then the city would do a little over 16,000. And kind of a couple of reasons for that split. 52% of the equipment that would be on the tower is City IT and has nothing to do with Wapaka Online. So that's part of it. It looks good having it split multiple ways on the grant application. And it is in the capital budget to do these two towers in relation to getting the Public Works Building onto the city network. So if this got awarded, it would cut down on what we need to use with other funding sources within the city or with Wapaka Online to make that happen. Project number two looks into our future needs. So we're getting working with the county on an expansion project. There's going to be a lot that a lot of expansion off that over the next year, two or three. And at some point, we're going to need to push more bandwidth around the network, both with growth and just natural increases of bandwidth usage. And we've identified several key links that would benefit with a significant backhaul upgrade. And a backhaul is what gets the wireless signal from point A to point B. So it's a point to point connection. The equipment we use right now, we can typically get anywhere from 100 to 250 meg across a link. And that's pretty good today, right now. It's pretty good going into this project and it'll serve us well for a couple of years. We see a couple areas going from Wapaka to the PTF. That's one of the new towers with the county that is very central to our entire network. That's central in the county. It's going to be a key location, so we'd love to get that upgraded. We'd love to get upgraded going to the tower at the Larrabee Highway Shop in northern Wapaka County. I think that's going to be another key point. And then out to the DuPont Town Hall, the northern portion of the county is very underserved with internet. And we see a lot of things in the future. So this other grant would be to move to licensed equipment on a different frequency. And, you know, it's a whole different playing field than what we're used to for buying equipment as far as cost. Typical backhaul for us costs between 3 and 500 bucks. We're looking at 5 to 6,000 a link. We've got to pay for FCC licensing, licensing, all the work that goes into that and the equipment's a bit more. So that's a 32, a little over a $32,000 project. PSC covering about 49%. Wapaka Online covering about 49% at a little over 15,900. And then I'm salary, so my time administering a project doesn't cost the city anymore. So the city will donate my time in kind, kind of get a little extra percentage in their contribution just to make us a hair more competitive on that. So those are the two projects. And I just want to thank Greg Roman, our grant writer, for all his efforts on working with me on these applications. He's a good wordsmith and can really take all the technical stuff and all the other things and make it look and sound a lot better than I'm able to. So a lot of the work, if you've looked at those is from him as well. So those are the two projects, looking for permission to apply for these and we'll see what happens.
Cool.
Questions?
Questions for Josh? Okay, would somebody like to make a motion and second?
I'll move. Second.
Who did? Who did?
Lori and Dimitri.
Okay. Move by Chestnut, second by Martin, that council approves of applying for two fiscal year 2022 State of Wisconsin PSC Broadband Expansion Grants for the project projects that Josh just described.
You're not going to re-describe them?
Any more discussion? This is a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Thanks.
Thanks, Josh. Item H is license report number 1568, operators licenses or bartenders licenses. I don't think we have any issues with anybody on the list.
I move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Keeland, second by Chestnut, that council approves of license report number 1568, operators licenses. Any discussion? Another voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Motion carries. We have no issues or project discussion. Next, we have communications and recommendations of the mayor. Mayor, anything?
Thanks, Paul. No, I really don't have anything to thank. Good job. Badgers.
You cut out, Mayor. Oh, you just said go Badgers, all right. Okay, thanks, Mayor. Motion to adjourn.
I'd like to say two things, beware the Ides of March, and motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. A motion by Hagan, who made the second?
Second.
Second by Keeland to adjourn tonight's meeting. Until the next rescheduled meeting, which will be on Wednesday, April 6th, because of the election on April 5th, I assume. Subject to call. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. We're adjourned at 7:38. Thank you very much.